Order and we'll run through what you've been moving.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Suzy Roll Call, please.
Councilmember Groves.
I am here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I'm here. For the consent agenda approval, we're adding the closed session minutes. Everybody got a chance to look at those? And we need to change the date on the agenda to July 3rd.
I know who changed the date.
Enough smells?
No.
Then we accept it. Oh yeah, she wants to get out of here and watch a game.
All right, then. To change the date now to closed session minutes, is there a second?
Of course.
All right, any other discussion?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
All right, public comment.
Perry Veacham reside at 924 Riverside Drive. Just want to, on behalf of the Dean family, I want to thank the community for their support with the fundraiser that we had for the Deans. Along with that, I believe we raised enough money that we're going to be able to help out quite a few families in the Lowell community. So it was a great success and it went off without a hitch. Thank you.
Thanks Perry. Anybody else? I believe we...
You?
I do.
I actually have a handout.
Five dollars for a handout.
I thought you were very funny.
So these are postcards of the upcoming event that I'm proposing. These were distributed through the help of Lowell Community Wellness at Lowell Expo. Would you guys like in?
Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Grant Higginson. I currently reside at 722 North Hudson Street. I attended coffee with the council on Saturday morning where they prompted me and encouraged me to come up here and make an announcement about this event. So I'm not actually from Lowell. I'm from Poirot, Australia, about forty minutes east. If you know us, it's just a football school essentially. But I moved here to Lowell in November of 2021. My wife and I got married in May of 2022, so we're in the process of settling down and kind of getting our feet wet with the different community events here. We also have a dog and that dog is very hyper and so we travel along the, a lot of the trails in Lowell. Specifically, North Country Trail is beautiful and just holds a near and dear place in our hearts. Because of this, I am planning the River Trail Triathlon in downtown Lowell on the Flat River. The current prospective date is Saturday, June 17th. Instead of like traditional triathlons, there will be no swimming event. It will be a kayak, then a bike, and then a run. And there'll be two divisions. There will be the try hard division and then the try harder division. I'm not that clever, I'm sorry, but that's what we got. So the try harder division is just like the former one, except that it's like double the distance, give or take a little bit. And there's also relay team opportunities. So if someone is an avid runner but doesn't really like to bike, you can sign up with a couple buddies and compete as a team against other relay teams. There's a couple points to note. Having a kayak event instead of a swimming event is, I believe, more accommodating to different populations, so I think we can get a broader audience for this event. I did a triathlon in Harbor Springs when I was like nineteen. Seems like ancient years, I'm sure it looks like that too. But I was very kind of freaked out by the swimming portion and it was also fifty-six degree weather, or fifty-six degree water. Not ideal. So kayaks keep you dry and I think it'll go smoother. Also having the two divisions allows for seasoned veteran triathletes to come from various places, as well as giving families and schools, children, I mean, anyone that wants a relay team and that isn't super experienced in triathlons to contribute. I also have connections to Grand Rapids. I'm a Quanis College graduate and have a lot of people around my age that are friends and so I think I can market this a lot to them and I already have. Obviously, I've told them it's not set in stone yet, but I also have connections here, obviously, and then back in Poirot, Australia. I'm really trying to push this for more popularity to gain some steam. You might be thinking, June 17th, like that's two and a half months away. Yeah, not ideal, but we can plan it and I guarantee that. Within the last, less than, or less than a month, we've made some serious progress with this event. I started by gauging interest, sending out a survey to the Facebook Lowell Community Chatter, which I'm sure everyone loves, and got some really good feedback from individuals, businesses, organizations. They really want to see this thrive and just take off. So we've created a race logo, a website, different flyers, obviously the postcards that you have currently. I've communicated with businesses and organizations downtown for sponsorship and for volunteers. I even talked to Nate Fowler, the superintendent at Lowell, and he said he'd be willing to send out the volunteer form that I currently have if everything of my route stays the same. And getting to that, I currently have on book for next week, Thursday, to have a meeting with chiefers here and a couple other key city members to finalize the draft routes, as well as allocate resources to make sure that we have enough manpower and proper planning to get this event going. So I'm really just looking for the green light to have this event, to host it, and once that happens, out the door with marketing and just getting more people on board. I believe that Lowell does a great job with community events. Obviously, everyone can see it. There's so many events going on any month, at any time of year, and I think that's what makes Lowell special. And I think that this River Trail Triathlon really encapsulates and brings to light a lot of what makes Lowell special. It brings businesses together, it brings community members together. It's just a lot of fun and adventure and I think that's what we need in a time like this. I also think it will boast Lowell's unique beauty and its opportunities that kind of separate itself from surrounding areas. And a lot of people from outside of the area will see that and kind of grow appreciation, but I think Lowell community members will see that and grow more appreciation with that as well. So I'm looking forward to working with you all in any capacity to kind of get this moving and to better the city of Lowell.
Excellent. Well, your partner, the right people, is Cody at Lowell, she's doing a great job.
Yes, obviously she's been my guardian angel, so.
Are you going to have kayaks for people who don't?
Yes, so actually I've been working with, in my survey that I sent Lowell Community Chatter, I asked if people had kayaks that we could borrow and if they had a way of transporting. And I've gotten, actually it's been just overwhelming. I've been basically, you know, a turtle on the field post. You know, you see a turtle on a field post, you don't know, you obviously know it didn't get up there by itself, but people have been reaching out and have been, I've got like sixteen kayaks already that are free for use and I haven't even sent out the official race event form yet, so.
How far are you gonna make them kayak?
Yeah, that's a great point. So for the try hard, I was thinking about a one and a half mile loop up and then back down, so one and a half mile total, and then around three miles to Scout Park and back. So they'll pick up like an item at Scout Park and then make their way back so we know they're not cheating. We also plan on having like patrol boats in the water to make sure that everything is smooth there too.
Make sure you reach out to the township offices too. There's a gentleman right there with the whiter hair. Get him some information if you already have done it.
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm an accountant, so I've got like spreadsheets worth of information, so I'd be more than willing to hammer this all out with anyone, so.
You might want to throw one of those flyers over there, Mary Elaine, because she reports on our council meetings and she runs Lowell first of all.
Mm-hmm.
Which is exponentially better than community chat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got the kayak.
And then like a try mediocre and take lots of breaks division.
He said he can get five or six people to bike.
I'll hold up the bikes when the other people pass. All right, anybody else? Parking ordinance 2302.
Recently, the city council approved ordinance 23 dash O2. At the time, the city council restricted parking on Main Street from Hudson to Jefferson from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. every day. Upon further reviews, the administration was directed to bring back section 2170, restricting parking on Main Street from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. from November 1st to April 1st only. So we've given you a red line and a clean version of 2170 with the modifications requested. I'm recommending that the Lowell City Council modify ordinance 23 dash O2, allowing the changes pertaining to section 2170, restricting parking on Main Street from Hudson to Jefferson from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. from November 1st to April 1st only.
It's the only change?
That was the only change.
I'll make a motion to support the parking ordinance change 23 dash O2.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, loan resolutions 923 and 1023.
I'm gonna have Jessica explain these to you.
Thirty-two.
Through the resolution for.
Okay. All right, so we have in front of you our loan resolutions. These relate and probably look very similar to the bond ordinances or resolutions that you passed at the last meeting. These, however, are just forms that the USVA has to adapt. They very much duplicate in a succinct form the representations that you've already made in the ordinances that you've adopted already. So you'll notice if you look at the terms, they reflect exactly what you've already adopted and approved. Essentially, the gist of this is that you can't refinance the loan without permission from them. You can't transfer the asset that you're financing without permission from them in other sort of common sense, common sense representations.
But we can still pay off early without.
Absolutely. It's completely consistent with and just supplements the ordinance that you've already approved. These kind of, and what Paul Bristol wanted me to reassure you is, this is the boilerplate loan resolution that every single community in the United States has to pass in order to borrow money from the federal government.
All right, any questions for Jessica? All right, I'll look for a motion first for 923, which is the water.
Make the motion for 923.
I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
And then a motion for 1023, which is the same loan resolution, just sanitary sewer line. Make that motion.
I'll support.
Discussion. Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl.
Yes.
All right, joint water advisory, Mike and Marty.
Yes, in your packet I presented to you a proposal from Lowell Township about them buying into the water plant and creating an authority. The offer that's been proposed to you was to purchase, or was to purchase a buy-in at $2,775,000. They basically, they took the appraisals, the middle range of the appraisals we received a few years ago from when we did the valuation of the water, of the water plant, and it came anywhere between four and a half and six million dollars. So that's where they came at. And they also, they're also offering $150,000 for the pump station located on Foreman Street. So presenting this to you for consideration. I recognize this is half the asset, half the asset value. My concern is a one-time sale. It's a lot of money, but in a sense it's not a lot of money. And when the money's gone, I guess the question for you is, what do you, what do you want to have? So go, go ahead.
Well, I'm the, was the evaluation what it would cost to build one today, or was that?
My understanding was when they did it, it was the valuation of the plant at the time. That was my understanding.
Yeah, it's kind of how I took it. It was just the standing plant. It wasn't to recreate or build a new one. But that didn't take in the pumping station. There was some piping that we found out that wasn't part of that too, so.
Any idea what it would cost to build one?
I'd have to look and see. Well, I'm not looking for. I mean, I would think, I mean, I'd have to look at what our insurance company would value it at, if like you had a total loss.
That's what I was going after, because.
I'll chime in here. That, to me, is not the number. I don't know what that number is, but that's the one. That's not the number to me.
Well, yeah, that's where I was heading, because I thought it was the loan number two, and I'm looking at this going, you mean you could build a water plant for $6 million? That's why I asked what it would cost to build one.
Yep. That'd be good information to have, I think.
Yeah, because, well, the evaluation seemed low to me.
Yeah.
When they told us that, I was like, wow.
Well, we know there was missing things in it, you know, and to spend the money all over again to. I don't think it's actually.
No, I don't want to do that.
I think, I think knowing what the replacement value is, just so we have that as a number to go on.
I do jewelry appraisals, you know. A new watch is 500 bucks. Is it worth 500 bucks? No. Somebody might give me 200 bucks for it. But if you're replacing it, it's a 500 dollar watch or whatever. And, well, that's, that's why I was applying to this, was is that replacement value, or is that? Well, this thing's, how old is it?
About seventies.
But it's been all modified and updated and.
What are our award winning?
The other, the other questions I have is, and I don't know if we've really pressed the township for this at this time, but with the buy-in, what, I mean, what are they, what are they envisioning? They haven't really envisioned what the authority would look like. I know we kind of talked about it, but the other thing too is, you know, the other, the other, the other thing is this, is that, I mean, is, is you, are they going to be responsible for the plant expansion? I mean, we need to recognize, we do not need the plant expansion. We don't need, we don't need to sell, quite honestly. There's no, there is no, there is no, no sense of urgency on the city's part.
When is the next meeting, advisory meetings?
We're supposed to get one today, but we pushed it out because this was tonight, so we won't have one until.
You're moving a stick today.
I am.
Let me see if we posted, let me check my calendar.
I thought we did.
I thought we did too.
My thing on this was, you know, it's to buy half, but then what is the responsibility for maintenance and service and repairs and future expansions and all that? I'd like to see a little bit more detail of what, what that is added to it.
So authority makeup, expansion costs.
Also, and also another thing to think about is anything outside this exclusive service area, you still want to have, I would so recommend you have an opportunity to 425 that. This consists, are the areas that we have now.
Existing, yes.
Yes. Anything else, we should be allowed to be able to 425, or allow that off if they want to expand service.
So that's enough for your, fair.
And this can be cooler talk, or, because I haven't seen it and it sounds like part of it's not in there, but I heard talk that, that the largest user, or it would go, the authority would go on how much water you're using and you'd have, whoever was using the most would have the most votes, whatever the case may be, which I believe is, would probably be the city right now. But I guess the concern I have, being a city resident, there's only so much land in the city and, and I see, I don't see the, I don't see the water usage growing at the rate that the township's growing. And again, then if it's, and again, this might be cooler talk, but I, this is what I heard. I would have a concern as a citizen of Lowell that twenty years from now, all of a sudden, because of the growth that's happening in the township, then all of a sudden they become the controlling entity of our water system. And, and again, I would, being a citizen of Lowell, I would not be in favor of that. And I don't know if that's accurate or not, but.
So my conversations with the council have been, you know, to try, if you're gonna do it, make sure you never more than, you're never.
Below fifty.
Below fifty percent is what I've always said, if you're gonna do this. You have to, it has to be equal representation once you reach that point or beyond, because I, I don't think that would be fair to the city. Just another thing to remember, this is the best economic development tool you have. So whatever we do going forward, we just got to remember that this is the best thing we have. And you know, you want to make sure that it's, you want to make sure that whatever you do, you're benefiting from. And with this number, at this, I don't see it.
I don't want, yeah, I think it's way low, but you think you have enough with this discussion to go back to the next advisory?
I think we could, yeah, I think we could at least start.
Be comfortable with that?
I think so.
I mean, you, you have to have a starting point.
Right.
And so I think there's more discussion, obviously. They're here tonight, so they know there's going to be more discussion.
Is there any way, I mean, obviously, in my mind, the township can continue to grow like a weed and we can't. So is there any way short of them putting in their own water thing? Is there some kind of intermediate?
I mean, the options are really for them. They could either go build their own facilities, which are costly, or they could, we could, we could expand and provide them that service. I mean, that's really rough. That's it.
Well, isn't, isn't another option, and it's a short-term option. I mean, eventually they would outgrow that, but put another tower up.
So if you put, we, Dan and I talked about this, so if you did build a second tower, add and add capacity to the tower, they would be able to hold a whole lot more water at the, at the facility, or meaning they're not pumping as much. But in regards to capacity, I don't, it still doesn't, it isn't going to address the.
You can still only treat as much as.
We can only treat, treat three and a half million gallons a day. And, you know, we were last, you know, this, I'm sorry, we were 1.5 million gallons, or I'm sorry, it wasn't three and a half, it was 1.5. But, and we had days last year where we were 1.2, 1.3. So, but if say they had another top, if there was another tower, they could hold 500, maybe we're not pumping 1.2, maybe we're pumping a million. That, that does alleviate.
Just to help with that too, yeah. If there's more storage capacity available, then maybe that pumpage gets spread out more instead of just all at once to, to keep up. That's where another, more storage capacity would help. Bottom line though, the plant can only make one and a half into one and a half. So it's how you spread that out. You have a lot of days where it's really hot and they're using, we as communities are using all of that water every day. It doesn't do us any good. But if it's a day like today where you get some rain, a lot of people stop watering, it's a great catch-up day. So there's a lot of variables, but that's where, more storage capacity would help, but doesn't occur. My, my concern's been when we max out our pumps, that we have a house fire. We basically have enough because we can pump out of the water with our trucks, right? If, let's say, one of our big companies over here, right, we literally don't have enough. They'll have to run trucks back and forth and we can't.
We'll go back.
Once you get one or five. Yeah. So that's, to me, that's the most important part of it.
Which is why I think you're gonna probably, you're gonna be having the, the odd even watering restrictions again, until until something is done, whether it's we build more facility or they build their own facility.
The current agreement, I mean, that we have, is it open-ended? No matter how much demand they put on the system, we have to.
So the agreement, the agreement says that we have a duty to provide them water. Over what the agreement doesn't address is future expansion. It never took that into account.
When does the current agreement expire?
Water is 2033. Sewer's 2027.
So we've got ten more years.
Twenty thirty-three and thirty-seven? Thirty-seven or twenty-seven?
Thirty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
They just can't sell the new homes.
Twenty, yeah, so twenty-seven and twenty-seven on sewer, thirty-three on water.
All right, so you have enough to go back to your advisory committee, maybe your next one, right?
Yeah.
Let me just drop, we can leave this right in old business. If there's updates, there's updates.
And then can you research from our insurance company what the replacement cost is?
Yeah, can do that.
All right, everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes. All right, new business, number eight, canoe rentals.
Hi, I'm Amy Shaver of 5399 Waterway Drive, and me and my husband Kyle are proposing a lease of about 350 square feet of space during the boat launch for a kayak rental setup on weekends and holidays. So it would be like Thursday evening for music, and then Fridays, Saturday and Sundays, and then Mondays for Labor Day and Memorial Day in fourth of July. The facilities would consist of a truck, probably Jeep, a trailer with the kayaks, and then a pop tent for a table and a place for people to sign waivers and do that kind of thing. So we're thinking about 350 square feet. And the memo provided, it's showing it on the pavement, this is to scale for the most part, but I think since some back and forth with Mr. Burns, I think we recommend that the lease would be all on the grass if possible, to just not take up any pavement space and to not interfere with people that are using the boat launch publicly.
So it's not on town viewers' property? No, more in the social district?
This is way over on. No, this would be, this would be on the, on our side of the pad, which literally was proposed, was on our side of the, of the, the launch pad. And it would've been on the, it would've been on the southwest corner, which rated that location. It was, initially it was proposed on the cement, but the concern was, was that that's the lifetime where the boat's coming at.
Did you talk about appraise the value? Because you can't just let them sit there, right?
Correct. So we did, basically I had the assessor look at land value in that area, and it came up for 350 square feet. It came up to $286 a month. So what I proposed with them was that if you break that down for thirty days in a month, it's just under $10 a day. So with the, with the days that they would be in operation, they'd be assessed $10 a day. And that was what, so I believe it was, it was equivalent to about sixteen days per month, which it came out to $160 per month if they, if they operated.
What about during events?
So that was another thing. We did, we did tell them that during Riverwalk, they could not, unless they did something with Riverwalk or did something in conjunction with the Pride Festival, then they cannot break those.
Kayak rental, will you do kayak rental during Riverwalk?
Bill Paul comes in.
Bill Paul does, yeah. They don't rent them, they just let you try them, don't they?
Yeah. It would not be our intention to try to do this during a big event, inclusive of said triathlon. Maybe just borrow.
So Mike, you're talking about the little area right behind where they got the little truck, trailer, trip, bro?
Yeah, basically they're talking now about not even using the cement. They're, they're part of the.
But the green, the green space.
Yeah, the Oklahoma property.
It won't affect what boats are already doing up in that?
So basically where the Port of Johns used to be, that area.
Yeah.
A little bit east of that.
There is a diagram.
Yeah, it's on the map. It's on, it's in your packet.
What?
Yep.
Pastry.
Yeah.
He's on. He's on.
Yeah.
Help him out, will you?
She's having a day's. All right, any other questions for you?
This would be a three year lease if we move forward and we still have to have, say, attorney.
Who's gonna, okay, so who's gonna because it's obviously weather permitting. It's obviously event closed or whatever. Who's going to keep track of how many days? Wouldn't it be easier to just set a flat rate?
That's why we set $160.
Oh, that's the month because it says $10 per day.
Yeah. That's how I broke it down.
During event.
On average, it would be 16 days a month, so you just said.
You're asking for two years.
Three, actually, I made a mistake, it was three.
Three. All right, any other questions? Entertained motion to recommend a three year lease with Flat River Kayak. Oh, hang on, Eric Scum.
Thank you, Eric Burkes, I live at 215 and a half West Main. I think this idea is fantastic, I totally support it, but I do have to ask about insurance. And I think it's a year or maybe two years ago, I had the same question regarding the insurance requirements from the city. My wife's business wants to do a one day event and it was expensive for the $2 million liability policy for just that one day. And so I'd like to know how insurance is going to be handled for this and if it's.
Yeah, they have to they have to list the city, they have to provide insurance unless the city is an additional insurer.
Okay, for each each day that they're.
For the whole time, for the whole time they're in operation.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
I'll support the motion.
All right, motion in a second. Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
And Councilmember Yankovic.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2304 is the animal ordinance.
Yep, the city was contacted by the Kent County Sheriff's Office recently regarding our animal ordinance. The Kent County Sheriff's Office also houses Kent County Animal Control. We were informed that Kent County Animal Control cannot assist us when needed if our animal ordinance doesn't align with an ordinance passed by the Kent County Board of Commissioners in June 2022. Jurisdictions not adopting the new ordinance need their local enforcement personnel to enforce local animal ordinances. The county in essence has asked to us to repeal our current animal ordinance and move any portions not covered by county ordinance, for example, excessive parking or number of animals, to a zoning or noise section of our ordinances, which we've already done. I've asked the city attorney to revise our ordinances to align with the request from Kent County attaches a proposed ordinance and the senior attorney can answer your question regarding this and also provide the information I received from the county on this. I recommend Lowell City Council approve ordinance 23 dash 04, revising our animal ordinances and aligning the countywide animal ordinance. I did talk to the police chief about this as well, and the police chief would like the assistance of the animal control when those issues arise, so.
Do we use them a lot, change or not?
We have recently, and they've been a big help. They're they're more up on the animal laws than we are. It's not something we enforce often at all, so.
Like the stuff that they want us to do, number and noises, we still have to handle that? You still?
We still have our we still have or we have ordinances now in place for.
No, but I mean enforcement, do we have to wait for animal control?
No, we take care of that.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, is it?
They don't handle that, we handle that.
Any local control?
No, no, no.
You don't want to be a dog catcher?
No.
Was it last summer that Sue that owl got bit twice or was it two summers ago?
Oh, last.
Two summers ago?
I got bit two summers ago too by that horse, don't you?
Oh.
By Pickles?
Yeah.
Twice.
Twice.
He didn't learn his lesson.
How many was it amateur hour?
Really is amateur hours. Motion for ordinance 2304.
I make that motion.
I'll support. But any other discussion?
I'd like to thank Pickles for striking a blow for justice.
Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Resolution 823 pension reform.
If you recall, a broad issue approximately a month or two ago regarding pension grants totaled $750 million to communities who were under 60% funded. If you recall, there was originally $250 million for communities with just over 60% who have taken steps to address their pensions, which was stricken from the current state of Michigan appropriations budget. I've been a part of a coalition to the manager statewide asking for funding to replace into the upcoming state of Michigan budget for communities like us who have taken the steps to address our pension issues. The coalition is asking for communities to approve the attached resolution, which is 823, to approve and send to our state senator and state representative. I also have letters of support we can send to our legislators legislators of the choose. If you recall, communities who are at 60% or below for pension funding have to file a non binding corrective action plan with the state. We met this trip up trigger but never had to file a plan because we took steps needed on our own. We are currently 67% funded, although I'm being told Mers and Fensels are way down from last year, so we may be down some when we receive our actuarial just June. However, we are not supported for trying to recognize and address our problems. I should mention, we are not asking for communities who are below 60% to not be able to receive the $750 million grant assistance. This is a good thing, especially if those communities are trying to address their problems. Communities like ours just want support for doing the right thing. I recommend Lowell City Council approve resolution 823 as presented to adopt a resolution asking state of Michigan to restore $250 million for pension grants to assist communities just over 60% funded to help address their pension issues.
Do you have any idea how many communities follow in this?
Quite a few. I mean, there's a in my group of managers, I believe there's like 70 or 80 municipalities that are in our at our at our level. And I'm sure there's more, I just know the ones who are participating in our work group.
And I'll make a motion for a pension resolution 08 dash 23.
Support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisburyo.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
All right, Board of Commissioner votes. Let's.
The only thing that that I have is and this is for parks, when you guys met, you decided not to take over the harbor board, that is correct under your leadership at this point?
Our board said that they'd be happy to do whatever's requested of them and they'd be happy to help out in any way they can, but as far as saying yes, we want to just do this ourselves, they'd rather leave it to the to the experts in the harbor board.
Just wanted to confirm. That's it?
All right.
Oh, I have mine next one.
Right, the only thing I was going to mention was that Jim came to our person recommending to talk about harbor board, who's kind of discussed that, but you know where that was.
That'll happen. Mike, you sitting manager?
Yep, I got a couple of items. First thing, found out today, there was an issue with about 60 people who pay their their water bill at Lowell Light and Power. So when they paid their bill at Light and Power, the city never got notified that payment was made. And normally that's done usually through a transaction relatively easy. When the city sent out the bills, those those 60 people were levied up late charges on them. So once we found out that the once we found out after the bills went out, once we found out of that error, we received the funds for the people that paid and we waived the fees. So if there's any, I believe there's, I know there's a couple of people in this room who is an issue, but if if it's if if you have any issues that and you fell into that, we're waiving the fees. So that's we'll correct that on our end. But yeah, so that was brought to my attention today and they fixed it, so there's that. Working on budget, it takes up on it's pretty much taking up everything I do right now until the deadline, which is April 17. I did want to comment on a comment that Perry Beecham made at the last council meeting pertaining to marijuana and this and keeping the the facilities open. So the way the state paid funds to communities is is done through excise tax. So sales, all sales are taxed at 10%. And then, so let's say you have two point, let's say you have $2 million in sales annually. The total excise tax is 200 million. Of that of that 200 million, 15% goes to local communities. Of that 15%, it's based you're paid per facility. So every so every community gets paid the same amount for per facilities, but if you the more facilities you have, the more you receive.
Regardless of their individual sales?
Correct, it's across the board. So and so we don't necessarily it wouldn't necessarily equate to more funds directly to the city of Lowell, however, if in in actuality, that those those sales in that hour, if you kept it hour open, technically, yes, the sales statewide could go up. But would the city of Lowell receive? Depends on how much the sales went up. I mean, it it really, you know, and it would have to be statewide.
Where did the other 85% go?
So 35% goes to Act 51, 35% goes to schools, the other 15% goes to counties that have the counties that have facilities in their county.
Does Act 51 and the school monies go to people who don't know?
Correct, that is an issue, yes. Those those monies go statewide and they don't they really when they put the law, you know, they really should have thought about that and allowed those funds to go to the communities that opted in, not I mean, for example, you have communities that didn't opt in, well, they're they're gaining an uptick in their Act 51.
Yep.
Because of the money that came out, so. I tried contacting some legislators about that and they really didn't want to address it, so.
Can a manager?
So.
No.
More items. On Wednesday, we met with Light Power regarding Bow's Road, the trees, I gotta write them down. So a number of things that we're dealing with there. So there's nine trees that that need to be removed. And under ordinance, we have the ability to remove those trees at the city manager or the electric utility. So we we plan on we plan on moving forward that, but we're going to before we do that, we're going to do a couple of things. The first thing we've done is for those nine trees, Lowell Light Power, they have a policy in their in their general governance guidelines that if they remove a tree, they make $250 to a tree fund. We have not designated the amount per tree, but what I what I agreed to do, since there's been some questions as to whether or not those were the proper trees, and I'm not really going to get into that, we matched that $250 for the nine trees. So when those trees are removed, we'll place we'll up to $500 per tree to to replace. And we're also going to reach out to Williams and Works to make sure that we have the right trees going in there and do two things, make sure they're, you know, the the trees can meet the conditions of that area, but also more importantly, don't go up into the power lines, which is an issue right now. So there's that. And then at the next meeting, we're going to be coming to you with more information about our tree removals or tree recommendations we have for tree removal. Why one of the other things like, for example, these trees, if we trim these trees, we the concern is is that they will grow even more than what they are now and it's going to be a bigger problem for us. So we're going to be coming to you with some comprehensive items for the next meeting, and we're not going to remove these trees until we have that discussion at the next council meeting. So we did, we've we've been working that Charlie and Dan and myself and Ryan, we we spent quite a few, we spent about two hours on that on Wednesday, so we're we're working on that, so you'll see something at the next meeting. Also, we're looking at partnering together. If you if you're aware, last year, Light Power brought a giant wood chipper, so we're going to be doing wood chipping first week of May, so people can put their their tree limbs out in front. You can't cut down trees and expect us to 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 do that. That's not going to be part of it. There's going to be more information coming out probably later this week about what we want to do with that, but Light Power and the city are working on that. Monroe Street, we did send notices out Thursday and Friday in the mail. I don't know if residents in Monroe have received them yet.
Yes.
They have, okay. So we're planning on having an informational meeting on May, May 11th at 6:00 PM here in Council Chambers for those residents who'll be impacted by that. We're doing a lot of work in the backend right now, finalizing all this stuff to move the project forward, so we're spending a lot of time, I'm spending a lot of time on that as well. 990 North Washington, we did get a report of no asbestos at the property, so I know they've submitted, they've started submitting their permits. The museum steps are being worked on. They did have to, they did have to stop at the end of the week last week because they needed more materials. Come to find out, I believe the water line goes underneath the steps, so we're going to try and address that as well. Riverside Drive, at the last meeting, I told you, we were starting the process of applying for our grants for Riverside. In talking with with the county, we score much better with getting the grant if we apply next year because we have to apply every, our best chance of receiving funding from them is every four years. Well, we I thought we had applied for this in 19, turns out we applied for it in 2020. So in talking with the county, they told us we score better if we apply for it and next year, which the project was slated for '24, '25 anyway, so it it doesn't delay us at all, but we will apply for that next year and we have a better chance of getting funding. The showboat fencing is is up and it's in place, looks really nice. And then also at the first May meeting, there'll be a zoning board of appeals for 2212 G Drive. That's all I have.
Excellent. Any questions for Mike?
Yeah, the May 11th meeting for Monroe residents, what time is that at?
It's 6:00 PM.
Also, I think you did a fantastic job with that, brother. I got one. It was very important. All right, any other questions for Mike?
I have, yeah. Speaking of Monroe, at one time, I remember we discussed making it one way, the last block, which would A, stop trucks who ignore the no truck sign, B, if I recall correctly, we might be able to sneak in some parking, the diagonal parking.
Yeah, so we we did look at, so our thought process was because there were a lot of moving parts with this, technically Monroe is still a major street. We felt, Dan and I have talked about this, then we talked about this, we felt that anything we do to address Monroe, we can do after the construction is complete, because all we really need to do is probably put a boulevard in or some sort of a landing, which can be done after the fact. And then at that point in time, we can we can make, we would want to probably transition Monroe from a major to a to a local road, because it if it's a major, you're a lot that really gives you you're really restricted on what you can do there. If it's not a major, we can we can we have a lot more control, so we can put it into, we would probably want to put it into local control. But we were, Dan and I, we talked about this, we weren't planning on doing anything with that until after the project.
I was just bringing it up because I know it's going to take a few months and I thought if we.
There's been some options kicked around when Dave Austin was still here, we talked about it since he left. And again, we we thought with all the moving parts beforehand, especially as Mike says a major street, blocking it, restricting it, angle parking on it, they're all bad things. So now, as we move through the project, we're not using those state funds, so we can have a little more leeway with what we do, and we can talk about it while we're doing it. While Mike says at the end of the project, kind of more leaning towards towards the towards the end, so we can incorporate it into the project at the very end.
That's why.
There's a lot of time.
Yep, yep.